We're going to call the meeting to order here. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
Oh, will be noted.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To approval of the minutes, I trust everyone's had a chance to read the minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 12th, 2023. If so, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Item three, adoption of the agenda. We have one correction. I believe we're going to move item eight C to item, new item five C. And other than that, are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Don't move.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Item four, consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. Item five, a firefighter appreciation month proclamation and swearing in of firefighters. So I have the great privilege to read a proclamation celebrating firefighter month, and I'll do that now. Whereas, Fire Prevention Month is recognized each year in October. October to raise fire safety awareness, to educate families, students, and communities across the United States. Whereas, we remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those who have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. Whereas, regardless of the language a firefighter speaks, or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. Whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. Whereas, at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destruction of fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. Whereas, the demands of firefighters are accompanied by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Dan Lewismet, Mayor of the City of White Bear Lake, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim October of 2023 as firefighter appreciation month, and encourage all citizens to show support and appreciation to our firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year, and by remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety. All right. And with that, I will extend my thanks to all of our guests joining us here today for all of your dedicated service to our community. And I believe we have the great honor of swearing in a few new firefighters tonight. So, I believe Chief, if you want to proceed.
Mayor Lewismet, members of council, thank you for having us. I have the privilege of introducing four new firefighters that we brought onboard this year. So I'm going to go through each one of them. They'll come up to the front room as I introduce them. We'll start with, all of them are firefighter paramedics. We'll start with Greg Wheelock. He has 14 years of experience. Started as a combat army medic. He worked at Pleasant Hill Fire in Iowa, then went out to Lockwood Rural in Montana, and Ames, Iowa, and Atlanta, and his girlfriend Katie is here. Katie Panning is here to help recognize him tonight. The next one is Alex Wile. He has five years of experience. Came from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. He currently lives out in Lake Elmo. He's on Lake Elmo Fire, and he's been there since November of last year. Next firefighter is Ben Horner. He has 19 years of experience. Started up north, worked at HCMC for 10 years. He was on Scandia Fire now for three years. His wife Taylor is here. Six-month-old baby girl Scarlett is here, and brother-in-law Lucas is also here. And then last is Chris DeVorek. He has 12 years of experience. He started down in Louisiana, also worked for HCMC for 10 years. He's on Andover Fire for seven years. His wife Jessie is here. His daughters Mackenzie and Samantha and son Trinity are also here. So this is our four new firefighters. We're very happy to have them. They all have a lot of experience. I've gotten a lot of compliments from our current staff, like this is a really good class of people we hired. So here they are. We'll welcome them, and we'll go ahead and with the swearing in ceremony.
I'm going to point to you individually to share your names after we start. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name individually.
Christopher Moore.
Benjamin Moore.
Alex Wile.
Gregory Wheelock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And will discharge.
And will discharge.
And will faithfully execute.
And will faithfully execute.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As a member of the fire department.
As a member of the fire department.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
All right. At this time, we'll invite friends and family up to pin them. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
All right. So I let them all know they can go back to the cell station now and enjoy themselves a little bit.
Can you guys come back up for another picture?
That's okay.
They're making the rounds.
Kicking calls.
Bottle.
Come back, okay?
Actually, we'll take a picture for the fire proclamation, so if either firefighters want to come in.
Okay. The rest of firefighters in the back room, why don't you come on up and join us? Take a picture for the proclamation.
I'm pretty sure that I'm not diving.
Here's a gap.
Photo bound, photo bound.
Okay, because I have to, like, also make a rose. Yeah. Make a couple roses for me, please.
Not worthy.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
How are you guys? Great.
Not even.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So next, we'll roll into the presentation, correct? All right. So mayor, members of council, somebody's got a... There we go. Thank you. All right. So I'm here tonight to give a update on the department was here early this year, and just going to go over things that have happened since then and kind of update as to where we're at with things as a department. So this is, I know all of you know this, but this is a reminder to anybody that's watching. So we have, the service area that we cover is city White Bear Lake, White Bear Township, Dellwood, Birchwood, Gem Lake. About 35 square miles, just over 40,000 people that we serve in that area. So it's a big service area. It's a lot of responsibility. Next slide. Our call volume, this is always something that's people ask about and how we're doing. So that was our call volume over the last period of time there. With, last year's volume ended at 5283. This year, we're about on pace about the same call volume. And so there's a few factors that I've kind of figured out as to why. There were two people that were high-volume users that are no longer with us. And so that's part of the reason why it's kind of plateaued a little bit. And the other piece is that we made the choice to not send our last ambulance out of our service area when there was a mutual aid request. And so that's made a difference, and that's where you see kind of that little bit of a plateau there. But we're on pace about the same for last year. All right. Next slide. The split remains the same. It's about 80% medical calls, 20% fire calls. Last year, we ended, it was about 84% medical calls. So slightly higher. But we're always staying about this range, and this is a national trend for anybody that does both EMS service and fire service. So this is on course for what we expect. Go ahead. As far as mutual aid calls, this was one of the big things that we had discussed at our last update was, you know, our mutual aid calls as far as EMS goes, how many we provide versus how many we receive. Before, it was about a six-to-one ratio, it was about a five-to-one ratio. So it's remaining about the same. I would expect it would be higher if we're willing to send out our last ambulance. So that trend hasn't changed. It's remained the same. Go ahead. As far as fire mutual aid calls go, so this is for reported structure fires. It's pretty balanced. We've given 20, you know, we've helped out 20 times, we've received help 16 times. So we're pretty balanced there. It's been a little bit slower for fires. Started off pretty busy, but the last, this latter part of the year, it slowed down a bit. So, go ahead. I always like to throw up with the five types of, the five main types of medical calls are. So this is unconscious, breathing problems, psychiatric, falls, and sick people. You can see, you know, how the pie chart splits out there. It's almost exactly the same as what we saw last year. So that, again, that remains consistent within our industry. Go ahead. As far as our patient disposition, this is, you know, as far as transport goes, and, you know, how many people do we actually treat? How many do we transport? So about 66% of the time, we treat and transport people. And you can see the split between the, either we were canceled, or they were evaluated and transported a different way. So this, again, is pretty normal for the industry. It's around 70% is kind of the norm, but this is very particular to each case and each person. So this is, we're, again, within normal standards. Whoop, go back one.
Sorry. Mass control of the side.
One more. There you go. Okay, right there. Forward. There you go. All right. So there was some turnover this year. So we lost three full-time firefighters to other departments. They were, there's a lot of opportunity out there right now. When I started in this business, it was hard to get a full-time job. Now, there are plenty of full-time jobs out there. So that is just a sign of the times we're in, and, you know, for whatever reasons, they decided to go to other agencies, which was a bummer for us. And then, you know, we had the backfill, and we've had some openings because of that. But fortunately, we're back up to what we were planning for now with these four. And so we are up to 16 currently. We also had four part-time employees leave. Again, one of them retired. Lieutenant Margaret Jansen retired. And then we had three part-time employees leave to get full-time jobs at other departments. So you can see the demand that's out there. We're fortunate to have a lot of good people, but when we have a lot of good people, there are others are seeking them, and if there's an opportunity, they get to go ahead and take that. Go ahead. As far as our current staffing goes, we have 16 full-time firefighter paramedics, which is great. It's the most we've ever had, so we very much appreciate that. The part-time employees, we have 21 employees currently. For the part-time staff, and the reason it says need is because in order to fill another full shift, we need another 19 to consistently be able to fill another shift. So we have two crews currently. To fill the third crew, we need that many more people in order to do that. So that is something, those numbers, again, have kind of remained about the same year to year. We add some people, other people move on for different reasons, and we kind of stay at that level. All right. Next slide. So this is what I was already speaking to. We don't have that third crew available a lot of times, both on weekdays, which is our busiest time, and weekends, which is a busy time, and then holidays are really tough. We're usually down to four people working, two crews of two. And that's just a nature of the industry. Our part-time staff are doing what we ask of them, but there isn't enough to cover it all. So they're able to kind of pick and choose what they want. Right. Next slide. As far as the future full-time staffing goes, that is really what we want to continue to do. And I know that there's proposed to have a couple more hired for next year, which is great. I'm happy to see that. It will do all of these things. It'll help to improve our service level, so we have proper coverage. It'll give us more of a consistent response. It'll create safer working conditions, reduce stress, reduce injuries, and will help to attract and retain employees. So the larger the staff we have, the bigger the group there is, so then they don't feel like they're always under pressure because there's only handful of them, and they have to be mandated back to work because there isn't enough to meet the minimums. So that's, that's all. Well, next slide. So this is, I just want to get into some calls, and this is a Fox 9 report, which I just wanted to show the video. It's just a short clip here. It'll be over soon. But this is a fire we had on Aspen Court back in May, on May 14th. And when the crew arrived, this is what they saw. This was taken by a neighbor's cellphone, and that's how Fox 9 got a hold of it. And we arrived with a truck. We had a pump operator and then two people to attack this fire, which isn't much, right? So it's so hot and so intense, those flames. I went out there, I was in Hawaii when this took place, which was a great vacation, but was obviously a very sad event to come back to and hear about. But if you were to, if you were to take away all the smoke and fire, that's about a 60-foot flame front that they encountered when they got there. Now, unfortunately, there was a victim right inside the door to the right of where the flames are. If you see where the vehicle is there, there's a little step and a railing. You could kind of barely see it in that image. And she was a victim of the fire that was right in that door to the right. But our crew, you know, could only do so much at a time, did a heck of a job in knocking this fire down, but it did delay us in our ability to go and get her. And when we first got there, there was speculation as to there might be somebody inside. And then as they're knocking the fire down, they said, yeah, there's definitely somebody in there. And so the crews with mutual aid crew from Maplewood were able to make entry and get her out. And unfortunately, she didn't survive her thermal injuries that took place during this fire. So that was a very unfortunate event, but it kind of highlights what we run into at times with not a lot of people when that first show up. All right. Next slide. This is another house fire we had. And the reason I put this up there is a picture on the left. Doesn't look like a whole lot. The picture on the right shows the extent of the damage to this house. So this house was on Cottage Park Road, again, early this spring. And this, there was some oily rags that were left on the floor, burned through the floor, down into the basement, up the stairwell there, and then burned the main beam in the house there. You can see where all the charring is. And because of that, it's a very large structural beam. Because of the damage, they had to raise the entire house, kept the basement, but had to, it was two weeks away from being completed, had to raise the entire structure and then rebuild it. So it was very, very unfortunate, but just gives some perspective as to what we're dealing with. All right. Next. This is another house fire. So we always tell people, be careful of fireworks soaking water. Don't put them in your trash. This was, this was the night of the 4th of July. This was a fire we helped out on down in Maplewood, but this is what it looked like when we first arrived. So gives you some, again, some idea what we're dealing with. Next picture. This is up in Forest Lake. They had a significant fire. Crews did a great job of stopping this one again. The wind was out of the south, and so this is the southern end of the building. And so as the wind's pushing, it wants to push the fire all the way through the building. So we were able to keep it basically just to that end unit there. Next. This is a modified trailer into a fishing house that blew up. So we got a call for an explosion in the area and a strong smell of natural gas. And then we started getting four or five calls of an explosion in an area. And we thought, what the heck happened? So the owner that, where this happened, didn't call right away. And finally, one of our crews driving by saw what was going on, and he finally fessed up to, hey, my trailer blew up. So that was kind of interesting. Actually did damage to a neighboring house from the flying debris. So, which was a ways away, at least 100 feet away. All right. Next picture. Storm damage. So we're familiar with this area and what happened with the storms. We had two significant storms that came through the area. Lot of damage throughout, lot of call after call after call, trying to help with power lines and trees on houses and all those things. So, again, just another example. Next. Had a couple of hazmat calls. We've used the hazmat team more than any other department in Ramsey County since I've been here. It's not a reflection on me. It's just stuff happens. So this was some pool chemicals that leaked and caused a heck of a bad smell, an ammonia leak inside the apartment building. So this is one of the, one of the hazmat calls going on. Go ahead. And then as far as water emergencies, the picture on the right is Bald Eagle Lake. So we've had three water emergency deaths this year. One of them was in Bald Eagle, another one was in a pond, and the third one was in White Bear Lake. So it's been a tough year as far as that goes. And we're doing our darndest, but this event, we were actually helping another department by walking through the water for a missing child who was later found at home about two hours later. So that one was a good result. Right. Next slide. So department training. We kind of look at what we have. We try to prepare as best as we can. We know, obviously, water emergencies are a big deal. We've worked very closely with the Ramsey County Water Patrol and their dive team, as well as Washington County's dive team, because we need a lot of resources when these types of events happen. So we have our rescue swimmer program. You can see three of the firefighters there in their gear in our boat, out training the other night, and also kind of familiarizing themselves with what Ramsey County has. So Ramsey County is very happy to work with us. They're very complimentary of working with us, so we have a good relationship. Next. Also do the usual firefighter training. Some of you have been in this building. This time, they, it was real fire and real smoke. But we do that annually. It's a lot of fun. So, next picture. And then, again, different skills. So we have some areas that don't have hydrants. So this is drafting operations. So we learn and practice moving water out of drop tanks. Go ahead. And then also, we have a house. The picture on the left is a house that we have up in Bald Eagle that was donated to us to do training in. So that's fake smoke there, and it's been great timing with our new people to be able to get them up to speed. As you heard, all of them have experience, but kind of learning how we do things and how we, our plan of attack and so on, and working with our crews, it's been a great, great opportunity. The picture in the middle is, we always help with the Ramsey County firefighter one to two programs, so brand-new firefighters. And so we're teaching them, and they've done that for, I've been in fire service now for 35 years. I trained on the same towel with ladders when I was a rookie. So we've been doing it for a long time. We continue to do it. So they're doing ventilation and ladder work here. Next. And then our community outreach, I'm not going to read all these to you, but we do a lot of it throughout the year. And it's a lot of fun. It's, we get great feedback from the public and enjoy working with them. And we will, you know, continue to do that year after year. There's another slide. Different events we've participated in. Next. So, and there's one last one. So the triad picture. So you see us all the time with little kids, and, and city manager Lyndy Crawford said, you know, you should get a picture with the old people because all you have is little kids. So it's a nice balance there. I thought that's a good idea. So they really enjoyed that, learning about the ambulance. And they spent quite a bit of time talking with the crew there at the back of the ambulance. So it was a good interaction. Last slide. So that's what I have for you tonight, and I'll be here for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Two quick questions. We're supposed to be getting, taking delivery of a fire boat soon, right?
Correct.
Can you comment on the status of that?
Yeah. So we were told November-ish is when they expect to deliver it to us. It seems, they started building it in August, physically building it. They seem to be online. We're hopeful. I can tell you that. We're hopeful. I can tell you that as long as there isn't ice on the lake, we will have that boat in the water, even if we're bundled up being out there so we can practice on it.
You showed a picture of downed trees during a storm. So other than maybe downed power lines, what role do we play when it's just a storm and property damage?
Yeah, so we, we will, I mean, if it's not involving power lines, we'll help to move some of the branches out of the way. But oftentimes, people are completely unaware. And so we'll be there with our lights on, and they'll just come walking by, and they might walk right into the power lines. So we type areas off and then talk with the neighbors. And they want to know, how long is it going to be, you know, before the power comes back on? And, you know, who do I call? And how do I get out of here? So we get a lot of kind of random questions. But without that, you know, Public Works is close after us, you know, to help clear roads and so on. We had one in particular though, where it had a tree come, came down out of their yard, ripped the power lines down, took the mast of their power line, the main service feed, the mast off of their house, which was right next to their front door. And then it was tipped over and, you know, laying down on the ground. And, you know, I was talking with the homeowners. They had no idea, you know. I'm like, hey, look, make sure you shut your main breaker off on your house. And because I've been to fires where, in those situations where weird things happen in the electrical grid, and then they start backfeeding, and now the house is on fire and there's no way to shut the power off, and so on. So it's, it's kind of a reassurance. They feel good about us being there, but we will go from, you know, area to area to area to help out.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Chief Peterson? Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. You introduced four new guys that currently work at other departments. How does that work? I mean, are they working two full-time jobs? Do they ever sleep? Or is it part-time here and full-time there, or vice versa? What is the mix?
Sure. So mayor, members of council, they, I mean, this is their full-time job, and then they work part-time or pay it on call. Typically, for all of the ones that you heard of that tonight, they're not very busy departments in comparison to what we have. I don't know if Andover is far enough away. I don't know for sure whether or not they have a staffing program, but I know that Scandia does not. And so it's, you know, they have a pager, they're coming from home, those types of things. And they have call percentages and stuff that they have to meet. But no, it isn't like they leave here and then go live there.
Okay. So this is their, for these, this is their full-time?
Correct. But even with our part-time staff, it isn't uncommon for them to have, we have a few of them that have three or four part-time jobs, because this is the career that they want to get into. So they work a lot of different places. They get as much experience as they can, so that when that full-time job offering comes available, they say, hey, look, I've done all these things.
Councilmember Edgbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, two questions. Let me continue with that conversation about full-timers. So just kind of looking at the, our experience with retention or non-retention this past year, it seems as though the offering of full-time positions would be a source of retention on the upside, where it gives us greater ability to retain folks that we've already perhaps hired as part-time, our training in our systems. Is that an accurate perception? Does the, does the increase in the number of full-timers that we hire increase our ability to retain, retain and get an ROI on our training?
Mayor, members of council, it does in the sense that the bigger that group is, because we have minimums. Currently, there are four firefighters.
Yeah.
And so the more we have available, the less they have to, you know, somebody calls them sick, or somebody's out with a, on a personal leave because they just had a baby. We don't have, if we have a really small group, it's like, well, you're up. Okay, you're up. All right, you're up. So, and then just having, so sick time, leaves, and vacation time, that bigger group allows that flexibility. And they talk to each other across the industry. You know, they know where each department is at and what the situations are. So yes, it does, does play a factor.
Okay. So a year ago, we had a conversation about mutual aid. You showed some data and so forth. You provided a couple of, here's a couple of other things that have shifted in terms of the total number of calls. Would our firefighters say that they have, they are experiencing less stress because they are making fewer mutual aid calls? How much of a difference has our decision to, our policy to not send our last truck? What's the impact of that? Is it sufficient? Is it, where do we need to be, where do we need to be thinking about that?
Yeah. So I know that they, they appreciate it. They notice it. You know, sometimes we get called as far away, you know, on the far side of Roseville, or New Brighton, or Forest Lake. And then they kind of go, hey, that, you know, we're not in our area. Like, what are we doing? The problem is, as I mentioned in our previous discussion, is the whole system is struggling across the state. And so there's no easy answer to that. And just like we would triage a higher priority call, and if we needed to, you know, give a call to somebody else, we would take the cardiac arrest before we take the sore thumb. That happens with our crews also. So we're getting called farther away, and sometimes the calls are not very critical. And so that, they kind of go, hey, what are we doing here? But we can't be both part of the system and not part of the system when it's convenient for us. You know, we have to be a good player and be there.
Are you satisfied that we are proportionately part of the system? I mean, the, so for the medical emergencies, the medical given versus received is still, I think you said, five or six to one. That strikes me as not, not proportionately engaged. We are disproportionately engaged in giving and being part of the, somebody else's solution. Where do we go with that? Or am I being a complete obnoxious individual for saying, hey, it's not, it's not cool that we are sending six to one?
I, so I, no, I agree with your consensus. What I can tell you is it's the norm across the industry. And so it is, we can't fix what is going on throughout the system. We could refuse to go more, but I don't know how that would, would play out. I don't think it would play out well. So there's no, no easy answer. The problem is easy to identify, but there's no easy answer to fix it.
Last question. Are we, so the last time you were here, we had a conversation around what is the nature of the enterprises that are making the calls? Are they the for-profits? Are they other community-based enterprises? What's, how's that breaking down these days? And has that shifted at all? Because my recollection of our last conversation is that a disproportionate number of those requests for service are coming from for-profit enterprises that are theoretically supposed to be meeting needs and responding to markets, blah, blah, blah. And I don't know that that's the case.
So they are technically nonprofits?
Yeah, okay, yeah, technically, yes.
But yes, that is the majority of the calls we're covering. It's not other city-based, but private-based agencies.
Who are contracted by the communities that they serve, and they have a service territory that they're inadequately serving.
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So following up on that conversation, and I'm going to put you on the spot, and I really, well, I mean to, because I'm going to ask a question anyways. But it's like, you don't have to have the numbers aren't off. But on that one to six, six to one ratio, whatever it is, it's an ALS, BLS, it's $1,000 that we're not seeing, and our taxpayers are paying for some other residents. And I want to say, yes, that is happening.
Mayor, member, members of council, yes, that is exactly what's happening. And, you know, our reimbursement rates, because there's such a high proportion of Medicare and Medicaid patients, as you've heard already during the budget presentation, our return on that is oftentimes not very high, because we have to accept whatever those rates are. They're not sustainable to the operation.
If I can just add, and that's, that is why we've made that decision to hold them back, right? It's not, it's not White Bear Lake Fire Department's responsibility or the city manager's responsibility to fix a nonprofit or for-profit's problem.
Or another community that has contracted that.
That's what I'm saying.
I know you are. And I'm just trying to be very clear that we are subsidizing the emergency services of communities that surround us. Is that an unfair statement?
It's fair in some, we cover, there are six entities that border us.
I understand.
It's fair for, for some of them, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you very much. Well, thank you all. We really appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 5C, resolution suspending SRO agreement with the White Bear Lake schools. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I will kick this to Chief Hager, but I did want to note, if anyone has been watching the news, you'll, you'll know that this has been ever-changing for the last several weeks. So the request, the recommendation that we have in your packet is a resolution for you to suspend our contract with White Bear Lake Area Schools. We are changing that recommendation tonight. We are going to request that you table this item, not suspend the contract at this point, but table this to the October 10th city council meeting. There's going to be more time, I think, for us to further evaluate as additional information comes back. And I would rather have this existing agreement in place should we be able to enter the schools. I don't know that yet, but should we be able to do that before October 10th? It will be on your agenda if you decide to table it at October 10th. And if we can pull it from that agenda and do not need to suspend it at all, that would be the best-case scenario. But I will kick it to Chief Hager for now.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're asking that you consider adopting a resolution suspending the school resource officer program for this school year. We also ask that you give the city manager's office and myself an opportunity to reinstate the agreement if the need arises.
Yep. So that is what's in your packet. Chief is going to give you some background of why we're here tonight, but we're not going to, we're not requesting that anymore. So the packet was published before we had additional information. So Chief and I are now recommending that you table the item. So that was the original request, yep. If you want to give them some background of kind of why we're, why we're even talking about this.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we've always had a long, successful relationship with the White Bear Lake School District. We've always supported our officers to be in school in the SRO program. We've done that for the time that I've been here in the last 10 years, and certainly far beyond that. We know that you've supported that, our officers being in the school. As of July 25th, you signed the last agreement for the school year of 2023, 2024, and we appreciated that. Recent legislation, specifically Minnesota statutes, chapter 121A, which governs the rights of students and responsibilities and behaviors of staff, has recently changed to include provisions about when force can be used by employees of the school on their students, specifically prone restraints, restrictions of movement of students. And in that, in that process of changing that law, they added SROs, or school resource officers, into that language to say that, that same restrictions that they're stating about school staff now applies to officers who are contracted by the school for school events, either in or outside the school, anything that the school contracts us to cover, which the council likely knows that we cover a lot. Certainly day-to-day operations at the school, at two different schools, high schools as well as a couple of middle schools, but also at any football games or any events after school as well. There's been many interpretations of this law. There's been interpretations of interpretations of interpretations, and done by the Minnesota Attorney General's Office, the Minnesota Peace Officers Association, Minnesota Postboard, as well as many unions around the area, that one of the unions that cover our officers have all had their own interpretations of what it meant. And what we learned is that through those interpretations, we really feel like the law really serves as a barrier for our officers to successfully serve in the school, in the schools, the way the law is written. The city manager and I, after a lot of deliberation, decided to discontinue SRO services earlier this month. We think it's really critical that we keep our cops in school, although at the same time, we're really, we're really concerned that we're setting our officers up for failure by putting them in school and subjecting certainly the city, if not the officers themselves, to some real liability. During the time that we have suspended our services, we also promised and made the commitment that we were going to pay as much attention to the schools as possible during our routine patrol. Our two SROs that were in school are on the street now, and they do everything they can to try to get to the school as much as they can, as much as the call load allows. We also made a commitment to continue to staff the football games on our own dime or on the city's overtime pay, because doing otherwise, allowing the school district to pay us for that would mean then we fall into that category again, where we're their employee, you know, we fall into the SRO league, if you will, or category. We think that we would like to formally, when it comes time, suspend this contract for the 2023, 2024. But we also are asking that we have the ability, the city manager's office and myself have the ability to reinstate that if facts on the ground, if you will, change, which we are really hoping and possibly anticipating that they will. So we've been in contact, and we remain to be in contact with all our, all the stakeholders involved, including people from the school district, the postboard, the attorney general's office, MPPOA, Minnesota Peace Officers Association, as well as all my counterparts in Ramsey County at least, the other chiefs of police. Just, we've been in constant communication with all those groups to kind of decide what the collective best decision here is. And we remain hopeful that this decision will, or this, this, the stakeholders will make a good decision in this, in this way, as well as the League of Minnesota Cities too, is another area, another organization that we're relying on their opinion.
Just to add to that, thank you, Chief. So what has changed since the packet was published is that the attorney general's office came out with yet another, another opinion that is somewhat set in stone until it is challenged by a court of law. Now, we are still waiting for another interpretation of, of the attorney general's statement or opinion. So that is why we are recommending that you table it right now. We think we're close, but we just don't have enough right now for, for you to, for us to be back in or for you to suspend it. So I will continue to keep everyone posted. We want to be in the schools. Our officers want to be in the schools. The school district wants us there. And so we want to be back as soon as possible, but right now, we just can't be there. So we, Chief and I can stand for questions if you have any.
Yeah. So Chief or Ms. Crawford, I just want to make sure I have this straight in my head, in layman's terms. So the legislature passed, at best, an ambiguous law that one reasonable interpretation is, it significantly hinders our officers' ability to do their job in the schools. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, certainly, the outcome was certainly that, yeah.
And, and one of those ways that it impairs their ability to do their job is that if they need to take action, which before this law would have been reasonable and within the scope of their duties, exposes both the city and then potentially personally to very real civil exposure. Do I have that correct?
Yes, sir.
So now we're all sitting as a municipality and as a school district, everyone who agrees we want the officers in the schools. And now we're sitting here stuck, not being able to provide this resource based on a bad law that the legislature passed.
Certainly a law that doesn't do us any favors.
Appreciate that. Council, any other questions or comments on this? Councilmember Edgbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just trying to understand the formal status of our contract. We entered a contract. We suspended a contract. There was a recommendation that we're not going to deal with, but what, so we're going to table something. What's the status of that contract and the nature of our legal obligations until further action? And do we have the authority to suspend a contract that we have voluntarily entered?
I'll defer to our city attorney.
My understanding is that the contract term, and Lyndy will correct me if I'm wrong, calls for a 60-day notice provision, but that at this, prior to termination, is that right, Lyndy?
Prior to termination, we're not looking to terminate.
Right. And so since you haven't terminated and you're suspending- Right. And so, since you haven't terminated and you're suspending, you're probably in some kind of a gray area, but my understanding is that the school district is satisfied with how the city is providing service, notwithstanding that this wasn't the intention of the parties at the time they entered into the contract.
So, there, while we may have a contract, they're not seeking to enforce the contract. They're understanding that we have this ambiguous gray conversation, and so, for the moment, this idea of suspending the contract is mutually acceptable, and we can hang in that space for a while yet, ideally until some greater resolution. Am I understanding that status correctly?
Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, you are, and it is within my job duties. I do have that authority to act as, as the chief and I have acted.
So, as a, as a technical question, do we have anything in writing from the school district declaring that they won't sue us for breach of contract? Because we are, in fact, pulling them out. I just want to make sure that we're, we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's.
I don't have, Mayor, I do not have anything in writing. Our contract does not state any default. It says 60 days notice to terminate. We have no intention of terminating the contract.
Okay. All right. Well, if the city attorney is satisfied that we are at best in a gray area, then, I mean, I think it makes sense to move forward with, with tabling this so that we can give some additional powers that be, some time maneuver, maneuver and interpret, a further interpret, and hopefully, the goal is to get, get the officers back in the schools. So, I would entertain a motion to table this definitely until the next council meeting.
I'll move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is tabled until the next council meeting. All right, moving on to, okay, moving on to item 6A, the special service district renewal for downtown service district. Ms. Schimmick, are you taking this?
Yes, I am. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have to call you this evening, a renewal of the special service district for the downtown service district number one. The, this service district was established in 1992. Currently, it is renewed every other year. Tonight, we're here to request a levy for 20, the years of 2024 and 2025. In the time that it's been enacted, it's been renewed a total of 15 times. This is a proactive request by the special service district, by Main Street. They petitioned the owners of the property. They require a minimum of 25, signatures of 25% or more of the land area and either 25% or more of the net tax capacity or 25% or more of those subject to the levy. For this year's petition, they've received signatures totaling 34% of the first category and 33% each of the respective two categories following that. On an annual basis, on an annual basis, we collect roughly $45,000 on behalf of the special service district, which is then distributed to them upon request. The request this evening is maintaining that same level. They're not asking for an increase. The funds are used to carry out the activities of Main Street, Inc., and Main Street represents property owners and businesses in the downtown area within the bounds of the special service district. The city acts as a pass-through entity, collecting the funds and then dispersing them. Staff is recommending authorization of the 2024 and 2025 special service district levy as presented. I would note that this also requires a public hearing, and this evening, on behalf of Main Street, we have the Main Street President Lisa B. Craft and the Main Street Vice President Kristen Cranmer, who are here to share a little more information about what Main Street does and stand for any questions council may have for them.
Thank you, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis Schmidt and council members. My name is Lisa B. Craft. Most of you probably know me from summer when I have a ponytail and running around downtown White Bear Lake, but I own a business in downtown White Bear in the Avalon Mall, B. Craft Marketing and Events. Yes, I am the Market Fest Director, member of Explore White Bear and Economic Development Corporation, and then I'm the current president of White Bear Lake Main Street. And Kristen here.
Hi, I'm Kristen Cranmer. I am the general manager and event manager of Kellerman's Event Center in the Alquist. I'm also vice president this year of our downtown White Bear Lake Main Street, and I also sit with Lisa as well on Explore White Bear.
So, we're here tonight just to give you a little bit more of an overview. What are we doing with these funds? So, we collect, you know, roughly $45,000 per year from this levy, and we are grateful for that because it does allow us to help promote the downtown White Bear Lake area. So, with Main Street, that is our governing body. That's the downtown business members that come together once a month, and they plan and execute different events and projects for the beautification of downtown White Bear Lake. It's a vital part of both our economic development as well as tourism in the White Bear area, so we are really grateful to continue to have this opportunity. Just a few of the different activities that we've done in the last year include, in no specific order, we send out a mass email several times per month to 2,500 subscribers and 253 businesses downtown. We have the website Downtown White Bear Lake, which features all of the businesses in that area and, as well as different promotions that are happening. We manned the two kiosks that are those green kiosks that are on Washington Avenue at Third and Fourth Street. We have a reader board on Highway 61 that we sell to our business members so that once a week it can change and promote different businesses in the White Bear area, and we just reinvested with the city in that structure and refreshed it a little bit. We have numerous events throughout the year, including Galentine's Day, Spring Fling, Customer Appreciation Day, Fall Fest, Holiday Open, Small Business Saturday, Winter Fest, and of course, Market Fest, personal favorite. We do different advertising campaigns through White Bear Press and other print advertisements. We offer social media on Facebook, Instagram, and now TikTok. I will confess even as a marketing person that we bring on a young woman, McKenna, who does the TikToking because I am not going on video to do that, and she does a great job with it. Yes. We will be relaunching our radio ads this year, so that's, you know, a good $8,000 investment of that $45,000 where we spend it on, I think, like 165 radio spots over the holiday season, which brings people into the downtown White Bear area for all the good things we have going on. And then finally, Kristen and I are on the Subcommittee of Outreach, which means we're also trying to engage the downtown business owners and managers and employees to be involved in downtown White Bear, because the more pride that they have in our downtown community, the more we are going to succeed overall as, as a district. So, Kristen, did you want to add anything else?
You covered at least. When we do this together, I just let you talk and we...
No, and a big part of our outreach to the businesses this year, which I'm really thrilled with how it went, we didn't just send them the petition letter. We actually sent them an overview of all the different things that I just described in more detail, as well as Kristen assembled for every one of the property owners the petition with their parcel numbers on it. In some case, there were many parcel numbers, but that made it easy for them to read about what this money was going to and then to send it back to us so that we had it ready to go and passed it on to Tracy for, for whatever processing that she does in her magic. But otherwise, you know, we're, again, we're trying to do all these efforts to make a really vibrant and robust downtown White Bear Lake, and with the passage of this, we're really appreciative and think we can keep the promotions going.
Good. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions?
It's because I talk so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we do have this scheduled for a public hearing. I will open it up at this time to anyone in the public that would like to speak to this issue, and I'll note that I do not have anyone that did sign up to this issue. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Counsel, what would we like to do?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The resolution passes. Thank you. All right, item 6B, special service district renewal for the Birch Lake Improvement District. Ms. Kinzvater, are you taking this?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I'm here as a representative bringing the Birch Lake Improvement District assessment for your approval. So, just as a history, the Birch Lake property owners created a petition in 2006 to form the Birch Lake Improvement District. The district's purpose is to finance and implement activities to improve and protect the quality of Birch Lake. The district held their annual meeting on August 16th to approve their 2024 budget. The district is asking the city council to approve a special service district charge that was handed like, handled like a levy in the amount of $22,511 for certification in 2023 that will be collected on the 2024 property taxes for the properties within the improvement district. The annual charge for each property is $363.08. The city mailed a public notice to affected property owners with access to Birch Lake on September 6, 2023, notifying them of the proposed annual service charge, and also published the public notice in the White Bear Press on September 13th, 2023. Tonight, we are hosting a public hearing for the proposed service charge levy. Staff recommends the council approve the resolution certifying the service charge once the public hearing is complete. I just wanted to note that I requested a Birch Lake Improvement District representative attend the meeting to answer any questions. I do not believe we have one in the audience, so we can hold the public hearing, but I don't know that, we won't be able to answer some of those questions.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will open it up to a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak to this issue. Please step forward. If you could state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Scott Samuelson. I have a property at 1291 Hedman Way in White Bear Lake. I tried to reach out to Steve, I believe his name is, and could not, did not get a response. I think Carrie gave me his phone number. He didn't respond, but I don't have no access to the lake. I don't even view the lake, but I've gotten it assessed. I didn't know the process of maybe getting my parcel taken off. I'm on the corner of 96 and Hedman Way, and basically, there's no lake in front of me. So, do you, what steps would I take? I guess I'm not getting a response from...
That's a good question. Anyone on city staff have an opinion or thought on that? Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I spoke earlier, and I think your best bet, I mean, your, your property ID is there. It's being assessed. It's going to happen. He may be able to stop it, but I directed him to VLAAMO because BLID is part of VLAAMO, and the only reason I do, I think they might have the history and why your property ID would be on, you know, at least answer the why. Yes, we have it, you know, it's going to be assessed. We, that's the facts. We don't have it as to why. And I think Phil Belafiore, the executive director of VLAAMO, would be able to help, at least give you the why, as far as what, you're close, but not too close, I mean, and help resolve that with BLID to get him removed. VLAAMO and BLID have a very good working relationship.
Could I call in tomorrow to get the number from maybe Carrie?
Yeah, you could Google it, VLAAMO, the acronym V-L-A-A-M-O, and you would find it very quickly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will also reach out. He did call and ask about that assessment. I referred him to Steve La Liberty, who is the president of the BLID, and I had assumed his question would be answered, so when he was here tonight. I will also reach out to Steve La Liberty tomorrow and see if I can get some confirmation to help him out.
Sure.
No, I'm not unsympathetic to what your request is. I just don't think this is the body to help it, but it sounds like we'll
Right, sounds in a good direction.
Provide some city resources. Thank you. Well, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Counsel, do we have questions from Ms. Kinzvater, or entertain a motion to approve, Councilmember Edberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, even before the exchange that we just had, I had some questions earlier as I reviewed the packet and have reflected back on the number of entities that the city either provides as a, funds via pass-through or funds directly with city resources. So, the pass-through would be, for example, Main Street and/or BLID. The other items, there, there are multi-jurisdictional bodies like the Lake Conservation District where we pay an assessment, and there's a formula, et cetera, et cetera. And then there are other things like Market Fest that we finance directly out of city coffers. And the item that I've, would, I have invited myself to have a conversation with Ms. Kinzvater and Ms. Crawford about the, what are the standard, what are the things that we care about in extending our approval? And how do we monitor financial performance of, to ensure that at least for the dollars that are flowing through and out of our coffers, that they are being managed in a, in a way that passes the smell test. So, I'm going to have that conversation. If there's any other member of the council that's interested in having, sitting in on that conversation, feel free and let us know, or let me know, and we'll try and accommodate that. But the item that was just raised at the podium gets to the issues of, so are there bylaws? Are there legal descriptions? Is there legal language that identifies who's in and who's out that might not just address the why? I think that's helpful, but the, hmm, what is this, who's, who's responsible, et cetera, might be yet another layer, a different layer of conversation that needs to be had. I support both of the actions that we're being asked to take tonight. I think it's when members of the community take proactive and come to a shared agreement about how they want to finance it. I think that's a good thing. I'm just trying to look for the, and what happens if something goes haywire? And what's our obligation and assessment? So, that's my comment.
Very good. Entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passes. All right, item 7A, second reading of an ordinance amending zoning regulations regarding tobacco and cannabis uses. Mr. Lindahl?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a repeat item here for the council. So, what staff will do is run through the presentations you've seen before just to kind of set the stage for our discussion and then open it up really to the discussion that the council has requested to have continued from the last meeting. So, just as a way, by way of reminder, this is a zoning ordinance text amendment application that was initiated by staff after direction from the city council. It would create tobacco product shop and cannabis retail uses and assign them to the B4 general business district. By way of the process that got you this item back to the council here tonight, the planning commission reviewed this item and held the required public hearing back on July 27th. The first reading of this ordinance was presented to the council back on August 8th. At that meeting, the council requested that staff bring it back for a second reading on September 12th, and at the September 12th meeting, there was a lot of discussion by the council, but you were unable to reach consensus on a particular action for that item, so you requested that staff bring it back to tonight's meeting. During the council review of this particular item, we have received one set of comments from Solomon Hale, who is a business owner of the property at 2008 County Road E. To summarize, and I believe he is in the audience and here to answer any questions you may have for him, but to summarize his comments, he basically originally, his original comment was to be included, to have his property included to be eligible for a dispensary under the zoning standards. He then, at the second reading, clarified or expanded on his comments to request that the buffers that would separate these uses from schools be reduced to assist his site. During the second reading, staff presented two versions of the ordinance to address the cannabis... cannabis and tobacco shops. And looking at those two, those two options are in your packet again for review. Looking at option one, which is dated again at the top as 7/27/2003, it contains one definition for all cannabis-related businesses and limits them to the B4 district, subject to the buffers again that we've seen on the map a few times now and appears on this screen. Option two was developed after some discussion and questions from the planning commission, but prior to coming to the council during the first reading. The second option creates separate definitions for cannabis businesses, which can be thought as of as full dispensaries, and then edible cannabis businesses, which would be limited to the sale of just edible and consumable related hemp products. Under this second version of the ordinance, cannabis businesses would remain and full dispensaries would remain limited to the B4 district. But edible cannabis businesses could be allowed in any commercial district as long as the business that there that is selling that product has a current tobacco on-sale or off-sale liquor license. Under that second version of the ordinance or under either version of the ordinance, excuse me, the tobacco shop and buffering standards remain the same, that 1,000 feet for a school and 500 feet from a daycare, a residential treatment center, or a park. In the context of either ordinance, looking at how it affects tobacco shops, we've talked about the fact that we have the White Bear Lake has six existing tobacco shops, and they would become legal, what's called legal nonconforming, or commonly referred to as grandfathered, because the six tobacco shops that currently exist in town are either not zoned B4 or the one that is zoned B4 is within the buffer areas for the school districts or the schools or the other related uses. They would again be grandfathered. They'd be allowed to continue just as they are. They just couldn't expand, and they would remain subject to tobacco licensing standards. The low potency hemp product sales would become permitted, subject to the new zoning regulations. And full cannabis businesses retailers would remain prohibited under the current moratorium that lasts until January 1, 2025. The development of the second version or option two that's in your packet was related was the result of conversation at the planning commission, and it really, this slide looks at some of the questions that were asked by the planning commission that led to the development of that of that second option. And just to highlight for you, kind of the last bullet point here is can existing tobacco shops sell cannabis or low potency hemp products under either one of these options? Option one would be no, only allowed in cannabis-related businesses, but option two would be yes. The alternative ordinance or option two would allow edible businesses with tobacco or on-sale or off-sale liquor licenses. Included again in your packet is a copy of the map that we looked at originally that includes the overall zoning for the community and the location of the six tobacco shops related to that zoning and the buffers. The takeaway here again, it really, this shows the northern half of the city, and the takeaway from these two maps is, at least for tobacco-related shops, none of them are located in the B4 zone and outside of the buffer standards. So again, you see the south side here, again circled in white, the locations of the existing tobacco shops showing either again outside of that zone that we're considering B4 or inside the buffer areas. Since the last meeting, staff did prepare another map that again was included in your packet, and this looks at the liquor licenses and tobacco licenses within within the community in relationship to the cannabis buffers. And so also included in your packet is a list of those sites and their addresses and their and their prospective licenses. Really, from that list, you would find again the six tobacco shops that we mentioned, 31 restaurant or bar on-sale licenses, nine total off-sale or liquor store licenses, six of which also have a tobacco license, and then 15 total licenses related to uses related to, you know, gas or pharmacy or grocery stores. 13 of those would would have tobacco, and eight of those would have a 3-2 beer license. Similarly, you see those displayed on this map, and similarly, you can see those located now here on the south side of town. Since the packet was distributed, staff has also developed, working with Councilmember Edberg, another set of maps that have been that were just distributed to the council here tonight, and they attempt to, I think, simplify some of the information that's already been presented by staff. The first map shows the just the B4 zone within the city of White Bear Lake and the buffers from the school or other related uses in as part of the tobacco or or cannabis-related businesses buffers. And then the second one shows the B4 district overall and the total sites within the community. And I guess with that, I might defer to the city manager or Councilmember Edberg to provide any kind of elaboration on their thinking related to those maps before we move on to the overall recommendation from staff, which remains the same from the last review of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Lindahl. So the purpose in for me in asking for this information to be developed is to think about, we are going to be faced with an opportunity to identify and approve one or two or X number of potential dispensary locations at some point in time. The zoning decisions that we have before us and that we have been under discussion create some land use competition. I'm going to assert, I don't know this, but I'm going to assert that somebody in this community, somebodies in this community, and maybe more than one or two, are going to be interested in establishing a dispensary. And as we zone, we limit or identify what which locations are eligible locations for hosting those those sites. The item that says B4 outside the cannabis business buffer are the business locations that are in the B4 and that are outside of the buffer, and I count about a half dozen or so. What that means is there's going to be a land rush when somebody if we move forward with adopting our resolutions, the option two, there's going to be a very limited number of places where it will be legal to establish that. And once we establish that, it's going to induce a tremendous amount of value in those locations that are eligible. If you look at the other map, which is the unbuffered map, substantially more possible locations, and I don't think we've had enough conversation about the role of buffering and the intent and the impact. So when we get into the conversation, I'm going to suggest that we actually not take up the resolution to as it pertains to zoning of dispensaries, but that we defer that so that we can understand these perhaps unintended consequences that will result if we adopt them right now.
So question on the map, then? So Councilmember Edberg, the these are lots in the B4 business district that are sort of available? Like, why am I looking at these?
That's my understanding is that these are
What is the definition there? Just like sort of not
Refer to staff, but I understand
Not with the current business already operating there?
Locations where businesses might be located that might conform to our definitions.
Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Edberg, this is every B4 parcel in city. It has nothing to do with the availability of those parcels. This is the zone B4 just called out, so it's not so so you can see it more easily.
But this is downtown, isn't it?
Yep, we have some B4 in downtown.
There's one little tiny dot.
That's buffered. We'll take it off. The one that does not have a buffer on it, this identifies all of the B4 zoned parcels in city limits. That's all that this calls out.
All right. So then, again, what am I looking at here?
Then the other one shows the B4 zoning districts with the buffer. So with the buffer, those other, the ones, the B4 districts that you're the parcels you're not seeing on the buffer are ineligible if the council adopts the ordinance that has the buffer in it.
Okay. Looks like there should be more overlap, but that's, I trust it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Lindahl's and staff's development of the map. I don't, I think we should let them continue with their presentation, and then when we get into discussion or choose to start taking some motions, we can come back and probe on this if there's interest, but I
Very good. Councilmember Jones, did you have a question pertaining to the map itself?
No, thank you.
All right. Mr. Lindahl, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, really, staff would conclude the presentation by just stating our staff's recommendation remains the same from the last meeting, which would be to recommend that the council adopts option two. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Okay. So, Mr. Lindahl, so I'm looking at this B4 map outside of the cannabis business buffer, right? The one we're referring to. So I want to make sure I have this straight. This is what option two would allow for, but in addition to this, there would be grandfathered in current tobacco shops that would also be allowed under the zoning code to sell the low potency THC products for now. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the city council, that's correct.
Okay. So let's extend that then further based on what option two allows. Fast forward to January 1, 2025. What would that allow for by way of a dispensary?
So, Mayor, members of the council, dispensaries would be limited to the sites that you see on the B4 outs, the B4 map that also says it's outside the buffer area. So this second map, again, with the with the with the limited number of B4 sites on it and the buffers, shows the net sites that would be eligible for dispensaries come January 1 of 25.
Okay. So go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to add to that because I think the question may be if a dispensary opened right now, what would happen? A dispensary cannot open right now. There is no grandfathering that would that could happen because it's not allowable by state law right now.
Yeah, I think Mr. Lindahl did answer my question. I mean, as of January 1, after a moratorium has expired. So Councilmember Edberg is correct that that would be the the result if we passed as it sits today. And then as a matter of policy, then it comes down to, do we care if this is the limitation that we're placing on dispensaries come January 1, which is which is fair, a fair debate, but I just wanted to make sure I'm properly teeing this up so that we're all on the same Okay, so then, before we get too deep into that, the other question I have is, as Councilmember Edberg suggested, why don't we effectively punt on the dispensary discussion? If that were to happen, we're saying we could amend option two to narrow it to the tobacco shops, which we know we want to get past tonight because we need to clean up that area of the zoning code and low potency, but we're going to carve out and punt on the the more significant stuff, the dispensary. How is that easily achievable by way of amendment?
Mayor, members of the council, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Now it's clear in my head. Rest of the council, what questions do we have?
Mayor, map question.
Councilmember Jones?
So on the map that we were given last week, this is this week, sorry. I've got liquor and tobacco licenses with cannabis
Yeah, we gave you that. That's new for this packet.
That's new for this packet. I can't remember
There was a lot
About my last weeks. My understanding, based on the red dots on the map, I am counting, and this is where I think I find we can agree to disagree, but I'm having a very difficult time separating, and again, if we punt on the conversation, I get that, but I'm going to make my point, dispensary of cannabis versus serving alcohol. We've got 12 locations of restaurants bars, including one that just had a shooting, I might add, right in a damn park, that literally butts apart, like I can throw a rock and hit it, and those are in the buffer zones, 12 of them. So tell me how much this makes sense that a dispensary that has a much more higher qualification and security than a liquor store, let alone a bar restaurant, has, this just seems really not fair, I guess, for the best word. I'm trying, and again, if we want to talk all day about, well, cannabis dispensary is different than an off-sale liquor store, okay, but there's still legal products within the state of Minnesota, and we're required to sell two of them, or at least, I'll give you bill 1.894, maybe. I just find that very confusing and strange when, and I am going to speak for Mr. Hale here, is that I find that his property, and again, Mr. Edberg, you know, buffers all you want, that liquor store's been there for 30 years. I'd argue how many people have been living behind there, but that's always a question on the south side that it could be longer. It's an established liquor store that's been there for a while. Secondarily, on County Road E, to limit County Road E and that ability, it's the corridor. We're trying to do everything we can to make that flexible. And so to limit certain areas to say, yeah, it's just B4. B4, as you can see, and that's the best thing, thank you, Mr. Edberg and staff for producing that, pretty skinny zoning, pretty specific, which I know, Mr. Mayor, your commission is going to be looking into in the future, which also leads me to say, you know, what is that? Never mind, that's a whole can of worms. So am I wrong in interpreting interpreting that map, at least as far as at least 12 locations, there may be some overlaps that are within the buffer zone that currently serve alcohol right now on one or serve or sell?
Mayor, members of the council, I think that's a fair interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trying to wrap my head around some of the things you said there. So I guess is the is the because I'm trying to understand what your what your point is there in terms of, are you are you making a distinction between the low dose edibles and a dispensary or not?
I
Because those other 12 locations that we're talking about, to me, that's the meat and potatoes of what's before us tonight is the low potency, the edibles, and then the tobacco location. And I would be amenable to saying, let's punt on the dispensaries because
Right, that's
We've got 15 months of regulation that is still as yet written by a newly established state agency. So I'll throw that out there as maybe a starting point because I think that's a fundamental question that the council needs to perhaps consider. Councilmember Edberg?
So when it comes time, I think, let me speak affirmatively. I think staff and the council have had good conversations about the about the tobacco zoning components, and I think there is an urgency with regard to edibles that both of those suggest we ought to act tonight in support of, though I prefer option two, where others sit, I don't know that we don't, but I think that is that is the action that we should take tonight. And then we let sit for 15 months or 12 months or some period under our control to better understand the the role and impact of buffering and whether that is a useful construct. construct, whether it, how we think that really works in the world these days. I think there was a day when it may have had a different purpose or a different impact, and I'm not sure that that exists today, but maybe. And I think, from a standpoint of understanding the, the role of public policy in creating wealth, and I'm talking about the unanticipated, unanticipated consequences of a very small number of parcels, all of a sudden becoming very valuable, and when we talk about how small, I would actually, so Councilmember Engstrand noted that the, the square and the long skinny triangle in the, in the southwest corner of Ward 5 is the, is now apartment buildings. So, I, I think that's the, that's Barnum 2.
That's correct. It was not rezoned. That's why it's still red.
Yeah, so, in any case, we, we have now apartment buildings there, and probably, and a parking lot. So, I suspect we would take those off of our list, making the number of options even fewer. And I think that's just something we all want to understand, think about debates more. So, when you are ready, Madam, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to offer a motion, but I'm happy to be quiet while we discuss the, the rest of Resolution 1 versus 2.
Sure. I, I don't know if we're quite there yet, but.
Yep.
Just one follow-up on that, just so, you know, the council knows where my head is on this. I understand what you're, where you're coming from, the unintended consequences, you make certain areas very valuable. To me, that's an afterthought, because one, that's not our intent. If, if it's the wishes of the council to set as a matter of policy, limited areas where we're going to allow dispensaries, then necessarily, those few areas become more valuable, assuming there is a, a market and an appetite for entrepreneurs to want to put it in there. So, I don't want to go as far as to say I couldn't care less, but that's, that's a long afterthought to me, although I, I understand your point, that will by definition make those more valuable, if there is a market for proprietors that want to open up a dispensary. And I think there will be, in fairness, but my thoughts. Anyone else have a thought, maybe as to one or two? Councilmember Walsh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, maybe a question still, on going backwards a little bit, but I'm trying to get this wrapped around my head, so I made a little chart for myself. So, if I start with three different products here, tobacco, edibles, and then retail, I'll call it retail, or dispensary. So, in this resolution tonight, tobacco, we're going to say zone B4, but we're six current ones, most of them are getting grandfathered in. They're also getting grandfathered into the buffer, right? So if we look at, we can look at number, there's six, I think we capped it at 10, though, right, with the, with the resolution, something we've done earlier this year. They're in B4, but the most of them are grandfathered, they're even grandfathered into the buffer, right? We have a buffer in this new ordinance in front of us, but they, they grandfather into the buffer, so they're not affected.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, all of them are grandfathered with regard to zoning and the buffer.
Yeah.
They remain subject to the licensing standards that are, again, subject to renewal annually.
So, edibles, proposed in the second resolution, the August resolution, any commercial district, we're not doing B4 for that one, we're opening that up a lot wider. Limited to, though, you, you got to have an alcohol or tobacco license already, which I like, I appreciate that, so you gotta, you already got to be in our system, you got to get a tobacco license or an alcohol license, but you can be anywhere. On the number, we're not going to have a lot of control on the number. We're not controlling that now, the state's not going to let us control that when we get to January 2025, so we're not even trying, which, I don't understand we can't. The buffer, though, I don't understand, on the, the buffer in, in play here for edibles, because this is a new product, new, new industry, so the buffer would be in play, right?
Mayor, members of the council, under option two, and talking specifically about the edible products, the buffer is not applied to that, that use. It's allowed in any commercial district, as long as the business that's selling it also has a tobacco.
Oh, you're right, okay.
Or on sale or off sale liquor.
Okay, yep, I'm looking at the resolution now, so, yep, you're right. The buffer is for, is not there, okay.
The buffer remains in place for tobacco sale, tobacco product shops, but option two removes the buffer for edible sales in any commercial zone.
Now, is that a policy decision we have control over, or is that just deferring to the state, the state law? Do we have, do we have the ability to do, do a buffer for edibles today if we wanted to?
I do not believe we have, I do not believe we are allowed for edible cannabinoids.
Yeah. And, and I talked about this last meeting, you know, in my little head, I love to separate edibles from drinkables. If you started, if, that's the real issue here, you know, these, these products are going to be in liquor stores and in bars, you know, infused alcohol products. I, I see it really a difficult time trying to regulate that out with the edibles, if, if I wanted to somehow limit edibles. So, what I've come to, and I was one of the reasons, I think, we delayed two weeks ago, there really isn't anything different in front of us, because there really isn't a lot of options, there aren't any other options out there. I spent two weeks thinking about it and working on it, there really isn't anything we can do. The edible thing has been taken out of our hands in many ways, going forward. So, that's edibles, any commercial district, got to have a tobacco or alcohol license, state preempts the number, and buffer not applied. So that leaves us with the retail dispensaries. We have set in this resolution to B4, just the zone to B4, and I appreciate the logic and the reasons behind that, as laid out in the memo. It's, it's a destination, it's not a neighborhood location, it's not a, you know, go down to the corner store. It's a, okay, we'll put it in our business, in our, in our, kind of in our regional business areas, which is B4. The number is to be determined, we're not deciding that tonight, that needs to be determined later. There's a lot at play in the number, too. I mean, yeah, population of White Bear Lake is going to be important, it's over 25,000, we're going to, we're going to have two, but there's also a Ramsey County part of this statute that we need to keep our eye on. The 12,500, one per 12,500 also applies to the county. If the county reaches one per 12,500, we can have zero. So, we do have an ability to have zero if the county reaches their number. I did the math one day, I think it's like 38 dispensaries in Ramsey County. You could imagine that could happen with St. Paul, with Maplewood, with Roseville, they could get to 38. So, when we get to this later, because we don't have to decide that tonight, there'll be a lot of discussion over maybe a cascading or a flexible resolution or ordinance that expresses the will of the people in the council, as to how many we want, you know, but there's a, there's going to be a lot of grandfathering, and you know, if one comes in and suddenly we're out of compliance, then it would open it up, you know, people are going to have, we're not going to shut down businesses, because all of a sudden, the number's there, but that's, that's for the future. And then the buffer isn't intact, because the legislature specifically wrote that in as an option for cities and counties, as a buffer, and suggested these numbers. So, the last thing I'll say is, well, I'll just, well, some people have said, you know, we're going to wait and see what this, you know, Office of Cannabis Management does, you know, and there's all these new things coming. The law is pretty clear, and there's things written in law, and there's not a lot, I, I think people are overplaying what the Office of Cannabis Management is going to be able to do through kind of rulemaking or setting things up. The law is the law, and we've got it in front of us, and it's, that's what we should rely on, and not, I think people are thinking that the Office of Cannabis Management is going to be able to do a lot of things that they're not going to be able to do without going back to the legislature. So, I would just say, be careful not to overplay that, that power that they might have. I'll just say, you know, I, I don't know if we need to, to wait, I'm happy to wait, I guess, if everybody else wants to wait. I think resolution, I'm ready to vote for resolution two tonight, based on the staff recommendation.
As is.
As is. I mean, I think, and, you know, the last thing I'll say is, you know, this, this, the map is interesting, I'm not, I'm not that interested, I'm more, let me put it this way, I'm more interested in the policy discussions around the availability of cannabis in White Bear Lake than I am in the business decisions or discussions that you've brought up, Councilmember Edberg. You know, the, the, whether there's a, a land rush. I also think some, a lot of people are overplaying the value of these businesses, and the, it's going to be a tough industry to make money in. We're one, we're one of the, we're what, number 22 or 23 in the country now, having legalized cannabis, the novelty has worn off, people are not traveling across the border to Minnesota to get cannabis, surrounding states have, Illinois is finding this. States around Illinois have legalized, and they've lost a ton of sales, because it's, people aren't going to Illinois to buy anymore, they can get it in their, in the neighboring state. So, and the, and the tax structure, and the fact that they've given the, the black market a year head start, is going to hurt the ability to make money at this. So, I'm not as concerned about a land rush on locations to open a retail cannabis store in White Bear Lake, I'm more concerned about the policy of, kind of what we want our community to look like, so, that's kind of where I come down. I'd be ready to support the resolution today, if the rest of the council wants to wait on these decisions. I don't think it, it doesn't cause us any problems to wait, I would agree with that. We can, we can punt on the retail locations without fear of grandfathering, getting going, or anybody getting, getting moving in a head start, because we have time, so, but I'm, I'm ready to vote tonight.
Councilmember Jones?
I would almost be there. I mean, if we wanted to defer the cannabis, I'm assuming that is on page three of the draft, subdivision four cannabis business, it's just those two points, just get removed from what we would authorize this evening.
Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, and some re-titling of other.
Because of the effect of that.
Yes.
Yep.
You may see, page two, we have a definition of cannabis business, we would keep that in, because that is referred to in subdivision one under purpose. So it is, it would be striking subdivision four, that is on page three, and then you would be zoning tobacco product shops and edible cannabinoids.
So, what I will support is, option two with removal, to defer to another day, that I really wish, I'm, I'm hoping I'm not here to have that discussion, to be honest with you. For those of you who know, I'm not going to be here after January 1st, and I don't want to be part about talking about cannabis or pot anymore. But, with that said, if the council chooses, I'm just going to be square here, if the council chooses to keep section, subdivision four cannabis business in there, I will vote against it, unless there is a provision for the County Road E of Mr. Hale's location. I just think it's absolutely ridiculous that we have a operating off-sale liquor store there, and we're not going to treat it the same, it's just hypocritical. So if that's left in, as is, for option two, I will vote against it.
Councilmember Hughes?
I'm just curious, mayor, members of the council, why wouldn't we have the definition here, edible cannabinoid business, don't we require them to have a license, that cannabinoid license that we bothered to implement as a regulation? Why is it only just tobacco?
I'm sorry. Why, so that, you know, subdivision three or whatever, provided the business also has a current tobacco license or current on sale, off sale, why aren't we also requiring they have a current cannabinoid license?
Are you referring to subdivision three on page three?
Yes, underneath F Public Park, yes. My whole, my, my question is just, why are we allowing anybody to sell edible cannabinoids that has not been licensed by the city to sell cannabinoids?
So, we have that separate ordinance already adopted, that is a temporary license that we will have until 2025, so we already have that done, that's ready to go, we have people who have applied.
But this doesn't require them to get that license in order to sell the cannabinoid?
I, I'm assuming that that is because this is a zoning regulation. It's pretty often that zoning regulations cover just land use. There's a little bit of a, a stacking here with the reference to the alcohol license, but generally, in zoning regulations, zoning and licensing operate independently of each other. So that makes sense to me, that that would not be included.
So, the, okay, I guess I just don't understand it, because this would then say that if I had an alcohol business, I could sell cannabinoids without being licensed to sell cannabinoids by the city?
No, it's very often that a use that's established by a zoning code can have other regulations in the city, like a building code regulation, or a licensing regulation, or other types of regulation. Because this is in the zoning code, it's really just regulating the, the area where the business can be established, not necessarily permitting that use.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, maybe the, the, another way to look at it is, the, the licensing standards for cannabis were already approved by the council. So, this, this regulation, again, just addresses, just addresses the zoning component of it, but it is implied that they need the cannabis license in addition to the, the, the specific liquor or tobacco licenses stated in the ordinance. Sorry, I, that sounded clear in my head when I was going to talk about it, I, I hope that helped.
Yeah, the bottom line is, if you want to sell cannabinoids, you're still going to have to follow our ordinance, which requires you to have a license, which operates in conjunction with what we're passing tonight, or maybe passing tonight. So, the fundamental question is, do we want to address dispensaries on a broader level? Would someone want to enter, bring a motion to pass option two as is, or does someone want to bring a motion to pass option two as amended? Councilmember Edberg?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Mr. Hale wants to speak to this topic, but I'd at least, we've done this on other topics, he clearly has an interest. I leave it to your discretion.
I'm not sure I have discretion when you tee it up like that, but, Mr. Hale, please, why don't you come on up here?
State your name and address for the record.
Salomon Hile, address is 2000 County Road E, East, White Bear Lake. I appreciate that you guys are working on this, and I'm, I'm not asking a special treatment in this case, I'm just asking that if we're going to be allowed to have a low dose THC product to be sold in the liquor stores, I, I'm just having a hard time to understand why not the full dispensary? We are a business that sells over 21, and dispensary even more secured, not easier to sell for younger people, why not being treated the same way that we treat liquor? That's, that's what I wanted to say.
So just to be clear, your intent is, you would like to operate a dispensary?
Yes, sir.
Because option two, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, would allow you to sell cannabinoids?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're, you're thinking further along ahead, once we get into January of 2025?
Yes, sir.
And as written, that would prohibit that, okay?
And I've been working with the city before even the law passes, and I said, I will pay my time and my money if the city needs information or anything like that. So I've been working, and I kept one open space for this reason, for a year and a half. So that's how much important to me.
Understood, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, my sense is, as I'm sitting up here, I'm going back and forth, I just don't know if the dispensary discussion is ripe right now, and if we don't have to address it, I think it behooves us to wait. The cannabinoids is a pressing matter that has to be addressed tonight, and, I mean, even I want to give it more thought. I understand what you're saying, I, I'm, I'm a lot less bullish on this expanding of the dispensaries, I see that as markedly different from the cannabinoids. So, I mean, personally, I would support option two as is. Admittedly, there's some unintended consequences, and the goal isn't to stifle anybody's business or business plans, but I have very real, real concerns as a matter of public policy, as to how many dispensaries go in and where they can go. And if someone has an issue with that, I can appreciate that, but we don't know how all this is going to play out, so I'm going to err on a very conservative side in wanting to limit where they go and what the expansion is until we kind of know more. But, having said all that, that decision doesn't need to be made tonight, we have a moratorium that buys us 15 months. So I think we, I think addressing the, the pressing issue of cannabinoids, and perhaps as important, tobacco, is kind of where we're at. So, Councilmember Jones, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would amend, you would?
Do a motion?
Yeah.
Motion for option two, amending.
Option two, draft dated 8/1/23, removing subdivision four and any in oral language that would address cannabis sales, particularly the article two.
Cannabis retail, a dispensary, yeah?
Yes, a dispensary meaning.
Okay. I have a motion a second on that, any further discussion? Councilmember Edberg?
I think we are deferring, so that we can have more conversation, understanding is good. I'm not opposed to us setting a approximate timeline for, you know, if we get more information, great, if we don't, fine, we're going to take action in a, some form of a timely manner in the next, before. in the next, before our backs are against the wall on, in January 2025. So if there is a sense of, we can take that up outside this motion, it could be an amendment to the motion, whatever, but I don't think that we should delay and dilly-dally, you know, postpone indefinitely. I do think that as we look at, so we've got nine other municipalities that neighbor us, presumably, depending on how you interpret the law, and depending on how the Ramsey County component is, we could have 10 in the neighbor, in the jurisdictions immediately surrounding us, all within a five-minute bike ride of almost anywhere in White Bear Lake. So anyway, trying to understand what is going to happen around us, what's that buying time allows us to experience that and think about that and understand it, and then we can make whatever policy we want.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think for purposes of tonight's business, I don't think we need to do anything further, but that's noted. And I don't think we're going to let this one slip through the cracks, so we'll, we'll address that in due course. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The ordinance passes as amended. I would entertain a motion to pass accompanying resolution.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passes. Good work all around council on that. Tough, tough issues, and I think we got a good roadmap here for setting us up for the future. All right, item eight, A, County Road E Ramsey County Critical Corridor Grant and Request for Proposals. Ms. Schimmick?
Thank you, mayor, members of council. As council will recall, in winter of 2022, we completed a county road E engagement initiative that resulted in the development of a report of recommendations called the Corridor Development Initiative. That, the creation of that report was a collaborative effort between the city of White Bear Lake and the cities of Gem Lake and Badness Heights with grant support from Ramsey County. And included in that report, well, there were a number of recommendations within that report, but included within them was a category that was essentially fostering a sense of place and purpose for the county road E corridor. In spring of 2023, in partnership with representatives from Gem Lake and Badness Heights, staff submitted a grant request when Ramsey County opened a solicitation for proposals for their 2023 Commercial Corridor Initiative. Among the eligible uses for that grant program was district-wide marketing, branding, and promotion activities, and design and implementation of wayfinding, signage, street furniture, and other public realm improvements. Because these activities were aligned with recommendations from the report, we did submit a request for $30,000, and Ramsey County did approve that request and awarded the city and its partners $30,000 for securing professional services to carry out branding, marketing, and placemaking activities. So tonight, what you have before you is staff is requesting that council authorize the city manager and mayor to enter into a grant agreement with Ramsey County, accepting the $30,000 grant, and also authorizing staff in partnership with the cities of Badness Heights and Gem Lake to put forth an RFP requesting professional services to create a branding, marketing, and placemaking strategy guide. We feel that this will set the stage for further work and collaboration, and continue the momentum that the report generated. With that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schimmick. Do we have questions for Ms. Schimmick? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
A motion second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passes. Item eight, B Otter Lake Road Cooperative Agreement for Right-of-Way Acquisition.
All right, Mr. Capi, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you a cooperative agreement with Ramsey County to do right-of-way acquisition for the Otter Lake Road project. So on typical county road projects, the, there's a cost participation policy where the city would enter into agreements with the county to pay for such things as right-of-way, in this case, trail, different urbanizations, such as curb and gutter, things like that. Kind of the things above and beyond kind of the typical county road. How many of these that the city's asked? So this has been in the, kind of the city's dreams for quite some time to upgrade that roadway, to make a trail that connects, at least this first segment would connect County Road 96 with Forest Street. There's a sidewalk on Forest Street that extends into the neighborhood. We have a trail on both North Birch Lake Boulevard as well as South Lake, South Birch Lake Boulevard that then extends into the County Road 96 corridor with the trails and sidewalk network there. So it's a major corridor connection for pedestrians, very heavily used, currently in very poor condition. So this is actually the first step in this process. The county has it in their 2024 Transportation Improvement Plan to do the improvements next year. We've been working for a number of years to go through a public process, work on preliminary design. The county's hosted a number of public information meetings over the last several years with the neighboring properties and the community to, to figure out what that looks like. So we're narrowing in on a design. However, just the process that needs to be followed to do right-of-way acquisition, it takes some time. So in order to do that, to have it as a 2024 project, they need to start that now. So this agreement would, lays out the cost participation and the cost split for that right-of-way acquisition. In this case, the cost participation policy shows 50/50, 50% county, 50% city. In the future, we would come back, under the current practice, we would come back with a construction cooperative agreement as well, once the plans are complete and the cost splits and whatnot are figured out for that. Right now, from a very high level, it's roughly about a $2 million project of the construction cost component of the cost participation policy. We're looking at roughly $100, $125,000. So a small portion of the overall project costs to get us the trail and the improvements that we're looking for along that corridor. Once we get through the motion tonight, I can give a little bit more background in, in the project and process, but tonight, this first step to get us, get the county going with the right-of-way acquisition so we can have it as a 2024 project. So staff would recommend that council adopt the resolution, approving a cooperative agreement for right-of-way acquisition for the Otter Lake Road improvements between Highway 96 and Forest Street. That would be the motion tonight. Once that, council acts on that, I can give a little bit more background information.
Thank you, Mr. Capi. Council, any questions or a motion to approving the resolution?
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right-of-way acquisition, so just can you get in a little more detail? Acquisition from who? So I assume it's the property owners along that stretch. We're talking about probably the, again, my directions are bad, west, the west side of the road along the lake, right? That, I imagine there's easements and whatnot there?
Yeah. Mayor members of the council, right-of-way is used as a broad term in the sense that it's not necessarily always permanent right-of-way. Most of this is actually temporary easement. So along the corridor, there's actually 43 properties between Highway 96 and, and Forest Street. For the most part, as the plans show now, we need temporary easements on both the lakeside as well as the, the non-lakeside. So think of it as, along both those sides, there's 43 different acquisitions that would occur. I think in total, some of the lakeside is owned by the property across the street, some are not. So I think it's roughly about 25 different property owners that we would be seeking temporary easements from. There is one permanent easement that we would seek, and that is at the southwest corner, if you, of Otter Lake Road and Forest Street. If you think of the, kind of the sharp corner to go from northbound Otter Lake Road onto eastbound Forest Street, in that little corner, to kind of soften that corner and, and do a pedestrian ramp and things like that, we need a small, one small permanent easement is what they're proposing right now. But this would allow, entering into this agreement would give the county that authorization to go and start acquiring those easements. They might get tweaked as we finalize plans over the next few months, but this would allow the appraisal process, so there's a strict process that they need to follow, doing appraisals and negotiating with the property owners, and following the strict acquisition process. So this just gets them going on it, and we'll kind of refine that. And these are initial cost estimates. They may come down, but, so.
Thank you. I'm happy to move approval. Oh, sorry, you had a question first.
Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Capi, so define, these are, right-of-way is being acquired for, really, trail. But it says road improvements. So what is the county planning to do for road improvements?
Mayor members of the council, so as far as the actual road, or the total project includes complete reconstruction of the roadway, so it'd remain a two-lane roadway. The lanes would narrow up. We would add the trail on the lakeside to have that continuation for the Birch Lake, north and south Birch Lake Boulevard segments. So it's a complete new roadway, new trail.
Stormwater?
Stormwater. Much of it is stormwater.
Not South Shore, complete reconstruction?
Correct, South Shore.
Full reconstruction.
Correct. Very similar to South Shore Boulevard.
I don't like that. That's not what we would do. I, I want to see, I mean, I may not be here, but it's Birch Lake. It's one of the cleanest lakes there is. This lake's got awards for, and it didn't used to be. Just had people in here that pay $363. I'm not yelling at you, although that's fun. You can see a little passion getting up because county tends not to do things when it comes to road reconstruction. And I get it, but it's your road. Take care of it. Do the right thing, especially that close. And just, we need to be asking the deeper questions on this for the county, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Capi?
Mayor, members of the council, as far as, I believe what Councilmember Jones is alluding to, some of the stormwater aspects, so the, they will have increased stormwater treatment capacity. There currently really is none right now. It goes in the ditches. It's fairly unprotected ditches. We'll have some underground treatment. Right-of-way is very tight in that location, along that whole corridor. On the non-lakeside, we will continue to have some treatment, and our environmental folks are working on, working with property owners potentially do some rain gardens in the ditch section to help further that treatment, but we will meet, meet or exceed any current standards that, and increase protection of Birch Lake from what it is today.
Add on one more thing.
Sure.
I am very comfortable, as long as it's, we're meeting our standards, Mr. Capi. Our standards, I trust, so thank you.
Correct. We would be meeting our standards.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
I have a motion. I have a motion a second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Item nine? Oh, I'm sorry. You had some follow-up. Mr. Capi, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, just a little bit of follow-up with this project. So this is a formal process that we need to follow, pre some additional work that staff has been doing with Ramsey County. So some of you have been involved with some of the conversations with some of the turnbacks and turnups that we've been discussing, where the county would turn back certain roadways to us. We've also been talking with the county to turn up some roadways with them. So in this area specifically, we've had conversations with Ramsey County to potentially take back this portion of Otter Lake Road. So we would take possession of Otter Lake Road from County Road 96 to Forest Street, as well as Forest Street to Ninth Street. So we would take that entire corridor. In exchange, the county, at least at this point, has tentatively agreed to take back White Bear Parkway from 96 up to the intersection of Otter Lake Road and Ninth Street. So up around the corner. And the reason for that is twofold. One is a portion of White Bear Parkway is within the township, so there's a lot of different back and forth as we go in to do street reconstructs, things like that. So this would, turning it back to the county, having it under county jurisdiction, it alleviates some of that. The other component of it is the, it would give the city the ability to restrict truck traffic on Otter Lake Road between Ninth Street and Highway 96. As you guys know, that is all residential areas, lots of truck traffic. And the reason it does that is, based on Google Maps and a lot of the different driving things, it directs truck traffic down more major roadways. And the kind of that hierarchy, it would put them on state highways, county roads, before they would any city road. So that's why that is the route. So that would allow us to restrict truck traffic south of Ninth Street, and it would actually divert, which is actually a better route. It would divert traffic on the White Bear Parkway over to 96, which is actually closer to the freeway where they're trying to get to. So it's a much more, it's a much wider roadway, as you know. It's more appropriate from a design standpoint. As you kind of snake around the lake, go through that four-way intersection at fourth, not really appropriate for large truck traffic. So it would give the city additional abilities to restrict that, that the county does not have. So we are in those talks. In the event that we move forward with those turnback agreements, this may become null and void as it would be a one-for-one swap, and we wouldn't have this cost participation at that time. So those are the, there's where we stand right now, but because we don't have those turnback agreements and turnup agreements fully negotiated and executed, this at least moves the project forward for a 2024 project. But we wouldn't pay any of these until later, and hopefully, over the winter, we can get those turnup and turnback agreements negotiated.
So, Mr. Capi, I assume that the reason Otter Lake Road between Forest Street and 96 is a tattered up pile of rubble is because there's all those big heavy trucks that are constantly going through there. Is that, is there a correlation between those?
Mayor's, mayor and the, and members of the council, that is correct. So that's, so back in the day when it was designed and, and constructed, it was never probably anticipated to have that much truck traffic through it. It's just kind of that nature of the beast where the county had jurisdiction over it. So as trucks got bigger and heavier, that was the route they took.
So the end game is not only a nice new road, but one that will actually last and be preserved in an ideal world. Very good.
Yeah, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I can just add quickly, I've, this, I've heard more calls, more comments, more emails about this stretch of road than anything else in my eight years on the council. So really happy and excited to get this, this fixed for all these reasons. There's also a rumble stick, a rumble strip along it for the trucks so they don't go into the lake. When, and if a truck comes by at night and hits that rumble strip, it is super loud, wakes everybody in the street up. So there's a lot of problems with this road. To get this done, get the bike path or the trail around the lake done, and I think I support the process of getting it back, and city control is all good.
Any questions for Mr. Capi? All right. Thank you. Discussion, we have nothing scheduled. Item 10, communication from the city manager. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few events. So our zoning code update kicked off last night, so that was exciting. So we'll be undergoing that for the next 15 to 18 months. The fire department has an open house on Tuesday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the South Fire Station. And then it is homecoming on Friday, October 6th, so the parade is from 4:30 to 5:00 p.m., which police and fire will be participating. And then this year, there are fireworks after the game. So I think that's new this year, so I thought we would share that. And then I don't have it up here, it is, but it's H, Human Resources Professionals Day, which I'm going to take that opportunity to thank Rick at this council meeting, which he probably cringes at home right now. But Rick and Sandy do a lot of hard work on behalf of all of our employees, and we only, we have just two HR professionals here overseeing about 140 employees. So big thank you to all of their hard work. And then lastly, I will be at a conference Friday through Wednesday, so I will be working remotely. That's what I have. Thank you.
Very good. Before we adjourn?
Not next week.
All right. Before we adjourn, I see a number of, what I imagine are, high school students in the audience. Do I have that correct? Are you in Cameron Mallow's American Government class? 20 years ago, I sat right where you were sitting with the same assignment. So it's good to have you here. I hope you learned a thing or two tonight, and I promise you'll, you'll look back on what you learned, and it'll serve you well as you go through your, your life and career. So thank you for sticking with us for two hours. We're just about done. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm open second.
All those in favor say aye? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
If you're in favor, say aye.